Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our afternoon council session. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilman Hobbs.
Here.
Councilman Moffett.
Present.
Councilwoman Snead.
Here.
Councilman Stewart.
Here.
Councilman Tuck.
Present.
Vice Mayor Wallace.
Here.
Mayor Ward. Here. All right, the first item on our agenda is a briefing on the Clean and Safe Initiative. Mrs. Bunting.
Yes, thank you. As you know, last month, we had a special meeting to talk about some of the additional actions that we could be taking to make a difference in some of the uptick that we had in recent violence in our community. And I want to stress, as we did then, and have stressed on a continual basis, that Hampton actually remains a very, very safe city. The reason why we took these additional actions is that we wanted to make sure that they are aberrations and not a permanent trend. But nevertheless, we did embark on a series of changes to include a range of public safety enforcement initiatives, like saturation patrols, and you've been hearing about our Mobile Command Center moving forward, an aggressive campaign with neighborhoods that we call Safe and Clean, where we've been working with neighborhoods by having our codes inspectors and police officers and other city departments interface with residents to try to enhance their neighborhoods. And we talked about the fact that we'd bring several ordinances back to you this month. So we thought that it would be appropriate for us to give you an update on the things that we've been doing in a high-level sort of format summary. If you want any particulars, we'll be glad to give you those. But then also to talk about the ordinances that are on your agenda this evening. The two that do appear on your agenda this evening are the ones we talked about with you last month, the curfew changes and the hotel occupancy stays ordinance as well. And then we had a third we said we were going to work on regarding the rental inspection and occupancy permit process. And we want to give you an update on that. Some state laws had changed. It made getting that in place within a month's time impractical. We do want to assure you that we continue to work on that and give you an update on that. So this briefing will be multifaceted. It's going to kick off with a presentation from Jimmy Gray. Of course, we have Chief Townsend, Lisa Yates, and other folks with us that'll be part of the presentation.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of council. As City Manager mentioned, we do want to provide you with a brief, high-level update to the Safe and Clean Initiative and the efforts that took place immediately after the presentation to council on July 16th. And so I'll kind of partner on this presentation with Chief Townsend. I'll give a brief lead-in on some of the efforts with city staff and how we're coordinating resources and information. Chief Townsend will provide more specifics on law enforcement effort, and then Lisa Yates to discuss the ordinances that are on your agenda this evening. As with any effort that requires coordination of effort and sharing of information and resources to be successful, you have to have a really close coordination of staff effort. And so what we've established is a Safe and Clean Task Force. And that task force meets every Monday morning now at 8:30. And the purpose of the task force is to kind of receive information, to synthesize the data that the walk-around groups or the core groups that are out in the field are collecting, to review the information that they're receiving from the citizens and the feedback that they get from the citizens that they come in contact with, as well as other sources of data that are necessary to help us, one, to make decisions in this process, and to develop the right strategies to address the problem of violent crimes in our community. We've established two groups. The first of those is the core group, and the core group is made up of HPD staff, law enforcement officers, and members of the Community Development Office staff. And the core group is a group that's out in the neighborhoods, walking the streets, knocking on doors. They are manned by, again, teams of law enforcement professionals and property maintenance inspectors. And the core group's goal is to talk to the residents, to observe conditions in the neighborhood, to collect data from the citizens and the observations that they have in the neighborhoods, and then they bring those back in briefings at the Monday morning task force meeting. The support groups, or the second group, is the support groups, and that includes staff in public works, adult probation, juvenile probation, Community Criminal Justice Agency, Parks and Rec, Hampton Redevelopment Housing Authority, social services, and of course, representatives from the City Manager's office and the City Attorney's office. And this group, again, meets to review the data that they receive from the core groups on the street. And with that data, along with other sources, we're able to identify target areas in our community, again, using a diverse set of data. And we have maps that are plotted with specific information that gives us a good visual picture of what's going on and where the hotspots are that require our attention so that we can focus our strategy and efforts on those. Of course, we need to all speak the same language, and so we develop a script. The script kind of provides the specifics of what the program is about, and each of the groups that are participating in this effort have that script, and so we can all speak to the community, to the media, and those who have or need to have information about our efforts. Of course, there are other partner agencies that provide or service resources, and they're ready and able to serve and provide assistance as needed. The 3-1-1 call center serves as our clearinghouse, and so if citizens call in or have code violations or issues of property maintenance, so forth, in their neighborhoods, and they want to call those in, the 3-1-1 center will serve as a clearinghouse. And of course, representatives from 3-1-1 participate in our Monday morning briefings, and we're able to share information and utilize that data to help us make decisions and develop our target strategies. Another program that we've established is Workers on Watch. And this program trains city employees to identify crimes and code violations in the community while they're out doing their normal duties. And Major Davis from the Police Department, as well as the Community Development Department, are training various city departments. They've already provided training to public work staff and social services staff, and they'll continue to provide training to other city departments to help us collect data, bring information, and as they observe crimes through the course of their day-to-day interactions with citizens in our neighborhoods. And then this week, we briefed our Neighborhood Commission and asked for their assistance by talking to residents in their districts to support the initiative, as well as to help residents and tell residents to encourage them to report crimes in their neighborhood. And so these are just a few of the things that we've, a few of the steps that we've taken since the 16th in our initial presentation. Again, an effort of this type requires a close coordination of effort, sharing of information. And so we think we're well on our way to developing not only short-term strategies, but also long-term strategies that will help us in the long run reduce crime. And so with that, I want to turn it over to Chief Townsend, unless you have any specific questions with me regarding the task force work. And Chief Townsend will provide a more in-depth discussion on the law enforcement efforts that are part of Safe and Clean.
Good afternoon, Chief.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Safe and Clean is up and running from a law enforcement perspective. I'll give you a briefing, right, to begin with, on our utilization of manpower as part of that overall effort and as part of our overall policing effort. Safe and Clean has been incorporated into our overall policing effort to address specific problems in particular areas of the city and to specifically gain the community's trust and cooperation in solving and preventing crimes. We have deployed the Mobile Command Unit, much in the fashion of a mobile field office. It was first set up, as you know, in Park Place, in the Park Place neighborhood. Then we moved it to the old With neighborhood, specifically Robinson Park, and now it's deployed near the With Shopping Center. During each deployment, officers and members of the Community Development Department have gone door-to-door soliciting input from residents regarding crime and other issues in their neighborhoods. Thus far, contact has been made with well over 300 households and businesses, and that number is climbing every day. We have also deployed additional officers in those neighborhoods through a variety of tactical deployments and have met with great success in apprehending persons during burglaries, robberies, and other crimes in progress. Having additional officers in these proactive deployments gives us the manpower to get rapid, saturated response to a crime in progress, thus increasing the probability that we're going to make an apprehension on scene or as the person is leaving the scene. Also, a number of wanted fugitives have been located by virtue of these deployments. Our next planned location for the Mobile Command Unit is the old Hampton neighborhood, which coincidentally is going to work well with, I just received notice the other day that they're planning a community meeting August 3rd, oh, I'm sorry, August 30th. We'll be in that neighborhood a week or so before that, and so the timing on that has worked out very well. We are deploying resources in a layered approach. If you visualize a wedding cake, for instance, the first layer or base is our normal patrol and investigative deployment. You may observe yourself or have a citizen approach you about, for instance, well, we've got all this violent crime in the city. Why are the police addressing minor issues like working radar on Fox Hill Road or somewhere like that? Well, we can't ignore our multiple priorities. We have multiple priorities, including traffic enforcement, highway safety, responding to calls for service on a regular basis to address any number of things. So the first layer of that cake is our basic patrol and investigative deployment. The next layer is filling gaps through use of overtime to ensure that all of our basic patrol beats are filled and not being vacant because of court training or other demands on the basic deployment. If we don't have at least our basic patrol beats manned, then we have to stack calls. Stacking calls limits or reduces the probability of preventing crime and making apprehensions for crimes in progress. Next is a layer of what we call limited assignment units, which target specific areas. For instance, if our crime analysis unit and our investigators detect that we have a pattern of residential burglaries in a particular area of the city, we assign limited assignment units to those areas, and we use overtime, we're using overtime to do that. Here, again, people that commit violent crime, violent crime that's gun-related even, commit other crimes as well. One of the recent arrests that we made in a murder, the person we found out subsequent to identifying him as a suspect also became a suspect in several burglaries in that same area where the murder occurred. So addressing any level of crime increases our probability of reducing crime of all types. Our Safe and Clean efforts are then layered on top of the preceding layers, and we're using overtime that you all have granted us through your appropriation. We're using overtime and other resources from within the division to accomplish the Safe and Clean efforts. On top of these layers, we are deploying what we call our High Impact Policing Project. This is comprised of uniform officers, special investigations, and gang investigators, as well as personnel from other criminal justice agencies, specifically at this point, the state police, who I reached out to in the last several weeks, and we're working a joint effort with them, with resources they have available to help us. This project is directed at areas and times where our analysis indicates the probability of violent crime is higher. It also targets individuals who are wanted on outstanding warrants and probation violations that we call PB-15s. And we've arrested in the last several weeks a number of people that probation and parole has identified to us, and we've worked with them to develop a target list of probation violators that we've been able to arrest. As a result, our officers have been able to make apprehensions during or immediately after crimes have occurred, solve reported crimes, arrest wanted persons, and gather valuable intelligence, which will help us in preventing crime in the future. I'll move on now to where we are in the acquisition of surveillance equipment and technology. We made good efforts in gaining quotes, identifying the types of equipments, price quotes, and identifying the type of equipment that will fulfill our needs. We're moving ahead nicely with that. The mobile data connectivity solution that we spoke of in the special meeting that will allow officers to spend more time on the street is moving as well. There's a number of policies, licenses that have to be developed, licenses have to be acquired, as well as hardware and software, and we're moving forward with that. It should be obtaining the equipment and put into utilization in the near future. The next area that I would, I'd like to address briefly is our collaboration with other agencies. We've had meetings with Commonwealth Attorney, Adult and Juvenile Probation and Parole, the Virginia State Police, HRHA, to develop strategies that will enhance our ability to fight crime in general and to particularly address violent crime. In addition, we are committed to being part of the solutions being developed by the Community Action Coalition on Youth Violence, as the organizers and participants in that effort work to develop long-term solutions to the complex social issues that contribute to youth violence. Also, it's important that we include our steadfast, long-lasting Neighborhood Watch program that solicits input and participation from residents across the city. All the efforts we're making now, we want to enhance programs that we already have in place. We don't want to ignore good, longstanding, effective programs that we have in place. I'd be happy to answer any questions that I can for you.
All right, thank you, Chief. I know I speak for everyone when I say we appreciate the comprehensive effort that's being put forth, and we've heard a lot of positive comments from citizens. Vice Mayor Wallace?
No, I just wanted to say thank you to you, Chief, and your wife for allowing you to come back and fill this interim gap for us. We feel extremely pleased and comfortable with the leadership that you're exhibiting, and just wanted to say to you both, thank you very much from a grateful community, and I know I speak for my peers with this particular sentiment.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Any questions for the Chief? Mr. Tuck?
Yes, Chief. Using your layer cake, I guess analogy, it seems on the face of it, the only thing that's new would be the Safe and Clean layer, that the base, I can't remember the second one that you gave, but I guess that's one where you kind of identify areas and you target resources, and then your collaboration, I guess, with other agencies. But it seems like the exception would be the Safe and Clean. Is that because, or do you feel like you're having success now because you have been approved for additional resources, overtime, or what's the difference in this layer cake versus what one would perceive as basic police work?
Right. It's, at this point, it's mainly due to the fact that we've got the additional resources that you all saw fit to appropriate for us, and that we're able to have the manpower available through these different layers. The other part of it is coordination and collaboration, and it's a big part of it, not just with external agencies, but between the units within our own organization to make sure that we're all working together and so forth. And I have to commend our staff for doing a great job. Everyone from the command staff down through the U.S. Patrol officers on the street are very enthusiastic about this and putting forth great effort. So it's a combination of those factors. My hope is, and my expectation is, as we acquire the technology that I spoke of and so forth, that's going to enhance our ability to suppress particularly violent crime even more. So I think, you know, when you look at suppressing crime, those of you that remember a little bit of history when the Son of Sam was doing serial murders, for instance, and thank God we don't have anything like that we're addressing, but that case really broke open because someone had, back then, in the 1970s, I believe, the wherewithal and the foresight to start looking at parking tickets in the areas where these murders occur and found a pattern there, and that's how that person was identified in those. So it's a combination of a lot of things, our crime analysis people, our investigators, working with outside agencies within the city and outside the city, having the manpower available to do these proactive things. When we're reactive, we're not nearly as effective as we are when we're proactive.
Mr. Hobbs?
Chief, I'd like to thank you because I'm getting phone calls, again, that are pleasant phone calls to take, that are applauding the Hampton Police Division for being visible on the street, knocking on doors, getting back to community policing, and the Safe and Clean Initiative, it, just watching the video on Facebook last night, which was an excellent video, thanks for doing that, and it informed a lot of citizens because we got a few hits on that. Also, it reminds me of what we did years ago in Coliseum Central with our Safe and Clean Initiative and community policing and putting uniforms on the street, that they were out of the cars, knocking on doors, introducing themselves. Hats off to you, excellent plan, and it's being noticed by our citizens. Good job.
Thank you.
Chief can speak to this, or you may not need to, but one of the assets that we have in our community that we don't give ourselves credit for are the school resource officers. I had the good fortune of attending a conference that they had in our community a couple of weeks ago, and was made aware of the role that they play, the significant role that they play in terms of a community's violence and nonviolence, in terms of early recognition of that particular situation and being to, able to intervene early and often. So that's an asset that we have in our community. We have community officers and school resource officers in all of our schools, and that's a major asset, and that's a major determinant also.
Mr. Tuck?
Sure. Chief, again, thank you for all that you've discussed today. It occurs to me, you mentioned Neighborhood Watch, and that's another resource and another asset that we have that frankly, very quietly goes about its business. And I'm wondering if we could not have a report fairly soon regarding the state of Neighborhood Watch, start recognizing those individuals that are willing to donate their time, effort, and energy, because there's no amount of funds that any municipality has that can put a police officer on every corner to prevent every even considered criminal activity. And so when neighborhoods get involved in policing their own neighborhood, it's another endeavor that helps assist in crime reduction. So if we can begin, Ms. Bunting, kind of looking at that particular, bringing that subject in front of us, see completely what that state of affairs is and what we can do in the future to help support it, that'd be wonderful.
Sure, and if I'm not mistaken, we actually recognized Neighborhood Watch volunteers at Spotlight on Citizens in the past, and so doing it again is certainly very appropriate. While I have the floor for one moment, Councilman Hobbs mentioned the video that Chief Townsend did on the YouTube and released, we put it on Facebook, and we did Twitter links. And just to show you the power of our many communication devices, I know he won't toot his own horn, so I'm going to do this. With, as of 8:30 this morning, we are able to track how many citizens we've touched, or at least recipients we've touched via Twitter, Facebook, Citizen Observer, and the others. I was blown away by the statistics, even recognizing the power of social media. But as of 8:30 this morning, 18,500 citizens were reached via Twitter, 2,400 via Facebook, 4,500 via Citizen Observer, and 950 via Instagram. And of course, we don't know how many of those are duplicative, but those are pretty strong numbers of the numbers of people we were able to reach, just doing the direct communication that Chief Townsend chose to do.
Mr. Moffett?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, again, I know you've heard all the accolades, but I'd like to also thank you, as well as all the other city departments that are participating, and for those folks that we do not get an opportunity to see, just want them to know as well, we appreciate the effort. My question is this, where are we with regard to overall crime, say, compared to in 2013 to, say, maybe the last three to five years? You know, we hear that crime is down. Can you give us a little bit more specifics on exactly where we are with regard to crime statistics?
Without having the exact numbers in front of me to tell you, but I can tell you overall, and I'll get you the numbers through Ms. Bunting. I think I've already sent some over, but...
Yeah, we are going to send them in the Friday package for you.
But the trend is down over the last five years. You have peaks, peaks and valleys in particular, Part 1 crimes, and we measure for comparison purposes, murder, rape, robbery, aggravated assault, burglary, larceny, and auto theft are the seven Part 1 crimes that we always measure and other departments do, and we compare ourselves with that. It's down overall. As of August 11th, when I got the last updated report on year-to-date, we're on pace or slightly lower in virtually every category except for murder. And that's the one that obviously has brought us all together with these concerns that we're addressing through these initiatives. And again, we're striving to reduce the propensity for that through a number of efforts, which you're well aware of, and helped initiate or did initiate through the Coalition to prevent youth violence. So it's a number of things that we have to address, but overall, crime is down. Now, I don't have the numbers right in front of me, and this is back in my previous life, but back in the 1970s, when I was a patrolman, one year we had just an inordinate number of murders. It was, we never had that many before or even come close to it since. And sometimes, you know, the numbers can be misleading, and that's why even comparing year to year is not as effective as comparing over-five-year patterns, and that's what we like to look at. So, but those numbers were made available, Ms. Bunting, and she, as she said, she'll be sharing those with you.
But in summary, we're, other than the spike in murders, we're tracking at or below where we have been historically.
Pretty close. I mean, and we look at them week to week, so I mean, you can have a little fluctuation from week to week, but we're tracking pretty close in every category.
Ms. Snead?
Chief, likewise, I want to thank you, and I want to thank the city staff that's been involved in the task force and all the various teams. And you're right, it does take collaboration. Instead of working in your little silos, now you're all coming together for the good of the order, and I really do appreciate that. Got a couple of questions. One, when you're going, what is your reaction from the neighborhood folks when you go door-to-door? Are you getting cooperation from them? And, you know, what's the overall reaction?
Predominantly, it's very positive. Once in a while, you have some folks that are ambivalent, and it may be because they don't feel comfortable talking to the police for a number of reasons. But overall, it's been very positive. We've been solving some issues in the neighborhood other than crime issues, but others, like the broken windows theory that we've all talked about for many years, things such as alleyways needing to be cut back and so that there's access and visibility in alleyways, particularly down in the old With area where there's still alleys between the backyards of residents and so forth. We've identified a number of issues like that that we've addressed. Excuse me, the residents have been extremely grateful for that. We've been working as far back as February before we even had the spike in violence. Me and eight or nine of my command staff went to an individual's home as the Neighborhood Watch Coordinator and Neighborhood Association leader was there also in a number of residents, and we sat at their dining room table for a couple of hours, I mean, myself and nine command staff, to talk to them about issues in their neighborhood. We've met with a number of community groups, Neighborhood Watch groups, and so forth, in their neighborhoods, on their turf. We've attended a number of Neighborhood Watch meetings since the first of the year, again, on their turf and their neighborhoods with a multitude of staff. Sometime we had more staff there than we did citizens, but that's okay. And then other times, there was just a lot of citizens there. Coincidentally, we had, last week, we had our three-year re-accreditation through Kalia, the Commission on Law Enforcement Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies, Kalia. And they were, we had onsite assessors that were here, as we have every three years for re-accreditation. And because National Night Out has been moved from the month of August to October... And because National Night Out has been moved from the month of August to October, but we still have one Neighborhood Watch group that wanted to have their National Night Out in August, and that's fine. And the weather was bad that night, so they made arrangements to have, it was in the Malvern neighborhood off of Fox Hill Road, Apollo Drive area. They made arrangements with Booker Elementary School to have it under the canopy in the front of the school to be out of the weather. Very nice, huge turnout, and our lead assessor attended that, and it was just a coincidence that that took place while they were in town. He talked to us, he told me over 60 people inside the organization, outside the organization, residents, and so forth. And I will blow my own, not my horn, but Hampton Police Division's horn, because I think this Commander Coward said this in front of numerous people, that he had done about 13, 14 on sites as a Kalia assessor, and including people that he talked to at his hotel, citizens on the street, the Neighborhood Watch people, employees from the division, employees from other departments in the city, over 60 people, he said. It's the first time he'd ever visited a city and done an assessment, that he did not get one negative comment about the police division or police department. You know, that meant more to me than anything else he could have said, and I appreciated that so much. And we have been recommended for reaccreditation, and of course, the commission makes the final decision in November at their national conference, their national annual conference. It has to be approved by them. So I was going to kind of hold that back, but I think the organization and the people in Hampton Police Division deserve to have that said. They work hard every day. And as I said, when we had our honor ceremony during National Police Week, they, along with our brothers and sisters in the Fire Division, run towards danger when most others run away. So I appreciate what they do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And then my second question, with the crime, overall crime being down, and I know that we have the spikes in the murders and all of the initiatives that we're taking here to address some of that issue, with all that you all are doing, how do we measure the effectiveness of this? How are we going to measure whether what we're doing is good, is working for us?
Right. Well, it's always been said that it's hard to measure how many crimes you've prevented, but we can look at the year-to-year data in five-year segments, year-to-year, the Part 1 crimes, that's one measurement. The other measurement is to look at quality-of-life issues within neighborhoods. Another measurement, quite frankly, is to look at the issues that the school administration, Mr. Wallace mentioned our school resource officers, the types of events or issues that the schools are having to deal with that may be crime-related. And then the other one is citizen satisfaction surveys, quite frankly, which the city does on a regular basis to measure citizen satisfaction with the police services that are delivered.
I want to remind you, we also told you that we would expect to see calls for service actually go up, that as we establish an even stronger rapport with neighborhoods and get them understanding what they should report to us, sometimes people don't want to call because they're afraid that they're going to, you know, burden the department, but they see something of a suspicious nature and they keep it to themselves. As we're going door to door, we're telling people, please call us. That's not a burden, that's actually very helpful. And so we may actually see calls for service or calls coming in go up, and that's a good thing. Sometimes people think that's not a good thing, it's actually a good thing because we're getting that data we need to be more proactive.
Ms. Tuck, did you have something else?
Yeah, possibly two questions. One, you used the term "stack crimes" early, and what does that mean? You said if you don't have the base covered, I guess...
Stacking calls for service, or having calls coming in faster than you can get them dispatched, as our British partners would say, queuing calls or stacking calls.
Stacking calls. And then second, kind of piggybacks what Vice Mayor Wallace said, regarding resource officers, are they involved right now in what you're doing? And if so, what impact will it have on what you're doing once the school year starts?
Yeah, I'm glad you asked that. And to piggyback on what Mr. Wallace said and to answer your question, during the summer, our school resource officers, of course, typically they take leave because they can't take leave necessarily during the school year. They also attend training, if they've got particularly mandatory training, to make sure their certifications of school resource officers are maintained. But they're available for us to use during part of the summer. We typically use them at Buck Row Beach. Sometimes we'll assign one or two to investigations to get some investigative experience and to bolster up our manpower in investigations. But in this particular, at this particular time, we've actually used them in our high-impact policing, drawing on that additional manpower, the ones that weren't in training, mandated training and so forth. We've taken some of our people out of community relations to use in our HIP effort. We've taken some people in administration. Second part of your question is how that going to impact, or how's that going to influence perhaps what they do when they get back into school, when the school year commences. The school resource officers are, in addition to providing that uniform presence in the school, and hopefully also providing a sense of mentorship to individual students that may need that or want that at any particular time, and being a resource to faculty and staff, which is where the name came from, actually. They are a great, great wealth of information about young people. I mean, they see them every day, they know them by name, particularly ones that are prone to get in trouble. We use the school resource officers, for instance, to work football games. It's an extra-duty assignment, but, you know, particularly, you know, the school that they work at every day, you know, we use them at the football games because they know all the young people from that school. So all this kind of flows into each other, all the efforts we're making, and information that they will get working this summer on this project, they'll take back into the school with them and hopefully be able to use that to make the school safer.
Are there anybody else? Thanks again, Chief Townsend, we really appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
All right, the next agenda item is...
Lisa Yates was here, in case you had any questions about the two ordinances on the agenda this evening, the curfew and the hotel occupancy one, and also just to let you know where we are on rental inspection. That can be very brief unless you have questions.
All right, does anybody have any questions for Ms. Yates about, yes, sir?
Just one, on the curfew.
Yes, sir.
And please, I need to probably review it again before this evening, but nevertheless, in the words that Councilman Stewart always uses, unintended consequences. When we hold parents accountable in certain cases where there's been a curfew violation, if there's a case, and hypothetically speaking, if there's a case where a kid has been acting out of rebellious, is there an opportunity for intervention to assist that parent?
Absolutely. A violation, a curfew violation, is handled as a child in need of services case, which is a section, actually two sections in the Virginia Code that allow the courts, the juvenile courts, to do certain things, to intervene, to provide services, whether the child needs either supervision or services. So depending on, and each child that comes in under the chins, curfew slash chins, is going to be evaluated to determine what their particular issues and needs are. So assistance is something that's going to happen up front in these cases. So I hope that parents will view that as a good thing.
Any questions on hotel?
I do have a question, and it may also go to the chief as well. In reading through, I guess, our briefing, I saw all the struck-through text of the previous ordinance. And I guess one of the things that I didn't see or read is where do, where do you take, if you find a child who's in violation of a curfew, what do you do? You're going to take them someplace, I guess, and call somebody. And for the chief, I guess, this does take that officer out of doing what he or she may have been doing, which might have been kind of providing some crime prevention service.
What we prefer to do is get a parent or an adult, a responsible adult, on scene, have them meet us wherever the case may be, or we transport them to their house, take them home. We try to resolve the issue as expeditiously as possible, but make sure that the young person is with a responsible adult before we leave them. Sometimes they get released with a warning, depending on the situation. Sometimes they'll be referred to juvenile intake or on a summons, or be referred to juvenile intake if there's another associated violation with it.
And this would go to the other part of the ordinance about the motel stay. What does an extended stay beyond 30 days, what's the connection with crime or potential for crime?
Well, there's the potential, if someone is operating, selling narcotics, for instance, they may choose to do that out of a hotel motel room. Prostitution is run out of hotel motel rooms at times. It makes it much easier for them to do that if they can move around, for instance, they'll do, set up somewhere for a certain amount of time, operate. When the heat gets on, they can move somewhere else. So those are the issues that are of concern.
And additionally, Councilman Tuck, something that doesn't show up maybe, or isn't apparent to everyone, is that children who live in hotels for long periods of time often fall through the cracks as far as school goes. So that is another aspect of the problem that the code amendments are designed to deal with.
But one of the ones I read, I think, makes allowances that if moving that person from that particular place will cause homelessness, then you'll make an exception. And I'm aware in the past of families who were homeless that were staying in hotels.
Correct. And it also makes allowances for social services if they need to place them there for a period of time. But of course, under those circumstances, they would be keeping track of the children and making sure they go to school.
I do want to mention real quickly on the curfew, in case you all had had this question. It came up to me that many of the young people who are working with the Community Action Coalition had actually sought a even earlier curfew than 10 o'clock. I wanted to make clear that we did research that because we value that input from young people, but it turns out that state law only permits 10 o'clock as the earliest curfew time under ordinary circumstances. And if anyone's wondering where we came up with the 10 o'clock and 11 o'clock, we did look at the prevailing practice in urban jurisdictions in our region, as well as Richmond and Roanoke, and the prevailing practice was 11 p.m. for those who were under 18. And of course, we talked about previously that Newport News already had the 10 o'clock for those under 14, 14 being sort of the year that you graduate, if you will, from middle school and then move on to high school. So that's sort of the rationale if anyone asks you about those, and why we didn't go, for instance, to 9 o'clock or sunset, which is really what the young people were advocating, is you should really be with a parent or a guardian or some responsible adult at sunset. We legally don't have that ability, but we did go to what the prevailing practice was, either in the region or in our neighboring jurisdiction.
Ms. Stewart?
Sure. Madam Mayor, the city manager and I discussed this earlier, and I think that one thing we should consider to at least have the flexibility to do so is that in our legislative agenda as a city and perhaps even regionally, that we ask for the flexibility to be able to put home by dawn or home at, not dawn would it be, home by sunset or home by 9 or 10. We should have the ability to regulate that with a little bit more fluidity than is currently allowed by state law. One question that I did have with the curfew as well is, when a chins violation occurs, the person, I guess, the parent and the child go to juvenile domestic court, is that correct?
Correct.
And what are the current, I guess, repercussions in terms of fiscal repercussions, the ability to be charred? I assume they're not usually putting out jail time, but in community service, I guess those would be the three things that could happen.
And no, it's more of a, it's more in terms of assistance, really, and putting the family, well, first of all, they're going to be assessed by the Family Assessment and Planning Team prior to getting to court, and they're going to have a plan made just for them. And in almost every circumstance, the court is going to order them to comply with the plan, which part of that plan may be for the parent to make sure that the child is home by curfew every night, make sure they go to school. The child may be required to report certain things to the parents, but each plan is different for each child. So at that point, there's not going to be any, unless there's other charges involved, there's not going to be any requirement for community service or, you know, doing time in less secure detention, or secure detention for that matter. It's more in terms of assistance.
Sure. The reason I bring up community service is, Councilman Moffett raised the issue of parental responsibility the last time that we met, discussed this, and practically got a standing ovation from everyone in the crowd. And it occurs to me that spending eight hours over four or five Saturdays with your child who didn't listen would generally motivate a parent and a child to have, you know, picking up trash on that Saturday morning on roadside, would generally lead parents to have some pretty serious conversations with their youngsters. So maybe those are initiatives, at least when our prosecutorial team is pursuing these issues, they can emphasize.
Actually, we'd need to pursue general assembly action on those things. Currently, the state code, in response to curfew violations, does not allow us to criminalize as far as the parent's concerned, actions, like you're referring to, to require certain...
So is community service currently would be considered a criminalization of that particular code violation?
I don't believe that in a, I don't know for sure, but I do not believe that that would be something that would be part of the individualized plan in a child in need of supervision case, that the parent perform, that the parent perform some sort of community service. That's usually a criminal disposition.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Yeah, I guess, along with Councilman Stewart's question, what's a Class 4 misdemeanor? I think that's the penalty for violating curfew and as well as giving false information, I guess, to the police officer. What is that for, I guess, a juvenile?
What is that for in terms of the juvenile?
Well, is a Class 4 just a general Class 4, or is it just for juveniles, there's a different type of Class 4 interpretation? No.
Generally, juveniles aren't ordered to pay fines, aren't ordered to comply, aren't jailed, they're given detention, they're given other options that make sense for juveniles.
I thought I read, there's a Class 4.
Classes apply across the board, but the manner in which they vary is based on the punishment. And as Lisa described, with respect to juveniles, the court has the leeway to vary the punishment from a fine that might ordinarily be imposed against an adult to something else.
Okay, but a Class 4 still puts that juvenile in a court situation?
Yes.
That's what gets them into the criminal justice process, that's correct.
I think you're talking about probably subsection F with regard to the code. I think you are. But in any case, they would, they, I think...
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Just wanted to make sure your question answered.
I thought it was in here. In here, I think there was a mention of a Class 4 related to the curfew, I thought.
The violation constitutes a Class 4 misdemeanor.
And I was trying to find out, okay, this is a Class 4, is it different for youth than it is for an adult? And you're saying that a Class 4, a charge for youth gets them into the court system, gets them into one where potentially you've got a youth or juvenile in need of services, et cetera, et cetera. Okay.
Exactly. But keep in mind too, because it also involves a violation potentially by an adult, i.e. the parent, the Class 4 misdemeanor sanctions that attach for adults would apply there as well. The kids go on a different path. Is that fair to say, Lisa?
Yes, it is, and it's a $250 fine, max.
All right, anybody else have questions for Lisa? All right, thank you so very much.
Did, was anybody hearing any update on the rental inspection dwelling ordinance?
Somebody have any questions?
We'll be seeing that next month.
We thought you might like to know why it doesn't appear on this month's agenda in particular.
As you recall, the adoption of a rental inspection dwelling ordinance pursuant to 361051 colon 5 of the state code was suggested as one of those tools that could help police and in our Safe and Clean campaign. We have identified seven districts where rental inspections could... We have identified seven districts where rental inspections could occur pursuant to a ordinance that would have to be adopted by this body. But in order for the council to adopt a rental inspection dwelling ordinance and identify certain districts, this council would have to make certain, very specific findings with regard to the districts. In order to give you the information that you need to make those findings, or to be at least able to make those findings, staff had together quite a bit of information and data to make sure that certain areas that might need to become districts had the sort of problems or situations that supported that. So that took a couple of weeks, and also the state code requires that two weeks' notice by publication be given of the public hearing where you would decide this issue. So that is why it's appearing on the September agenda, and we will have information for you on the districts that have been identified and hopefully be able to provide you with all the information you need to consider whether you want to make findings for those districts.
Ms. Stewart, anybody have any questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Bunting, anything else on agenda, item number one?
No, ma'am.
All right. That brings us to number two, which is the Waterways Management Monthly Report. I think we're going to hear from Ms. Walker.
Ms. Walker's coming up. This month, we're going to focus on our hazard mitigation home elevation programs and for folks who want to know how you go about accessing the home elevation loan program that we have and/or state and federal funding for home elevations, we thought it would be timely to give you an update on that process. And Ms. Walker's our emergency manager for the city.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Thank you for this opportunity to come brief you on the mitigation program activities that emergency management has been working on this past year and a half. We have been working on a, putting a structure together as we go after some of these federal grants and trying to identify actual projects and strategies where we can look across the city and leverage funds. Right now, this is very heavy in FEMA funds, but there are other projects working with Public Works and other departments that might have other funding streams that we can bring together to work on infrastructure projects in the future. And then also by putting a structure into place as we get these awards, to be able to show that we can complete these projects in a timely manner and according to all the guidelines with some of these funding streams that come with it. So some of the items that we have put into place, we've created a natural events mitigation steering committee, which is kind of a in-house with community development, Public Works, the floodplain manager, procurement legal, just coming together as a sounding board to identify projects and also to address issues that may come up as we move forward with mitigation projects in the city. We're in the final stages of a contract with an engineering design firm that is very experienced in elevating homes in the region and throughout the Commonwealth, and so we needed that assistance as we move forward with a lot of these FEMA grants that we have been awarded or in the process of being considered for awarding. And then we have an emergency management planner that's really dedicated to mitigation in her understanding and training and all the different requirements as grant changes come, and she's really our link to the state on a day-to-day basis. So with the Biggerett-Waters legislation act that came about this past July, there used to be five or six grant programs, and I'll share one of the programs that we got awarded, but that has now been consolidated into three federal grants. And so that is one of the items there. In 2009 Nor'easter, and I'm showing the maps, kind of just general areas of where we have applied for citizens throughout the city. The city was awarded in the disaster relief of the 2009 Nor'easter Disaster DR 1862, we were awarded a little over half a million dollars to elevate four residences. But at the time, now that we've gotten the award, we've gone back out to look at the homes to elevate, and every home is a little different. The actual amount to elevate the four homes is not enough to be successful to do all four. So we have been working with the state, the homeowners, and the actual engineering company as we move forward to modify our grant and our work so that we may only be able to elevate two homes out of the original four, but the other two are being considered in other grant processes. So we're moving forward on that. The severe repetitive loss grant of 2012, we were also awarded a little over a million dollars to elevate 11 residences, and the city had actually applied for close to 1.7 million. And as you can see, that's way short of what we were actually awarded. So again, with this grant, we are also in the same boat, that we are underfunded, and we're not going to be able to elevate all 11 homes successfully. So we're working with the state to adjust our project. But I just wanted to keep you informed. And also with this severe repetitive loss grant, it has been consolidated now within those three grants, and so it is no longer being offered by the federal government. But we were able to get this award in its last year. We've also been applying during the, after Hurricane Irene, and we applied for a little over 1.3 million dollars to elevate eight homes. Currently, it has passed the state review, and right now FEMA is reviewing and considering whether to award the city this amount.
Is that amount going to be enough?
That one will be, yes. At this time, we've got better estimates before coming onboard, and that's why we're trying to put a structure in place so we're not short, Mr. Wallace. And then with the earthquake, we also applied for another 1.8 million to elevate nine homes, and in the process, it's in the state, it's passed the state review, and we're undergoing a FEMA review. And we feel fairly confident, hopefully, that we will be hearing very shortly, but I'll explain that.
Let me ask, I'm sorry, let me ask a question here.
Yes.
I'm thinking that earthquake, was that like 2010?
Yes.
I mean, I felt it in my house, it was just a little shaking. To elevate a house because of an earthquake, was there flooding somewhere?
Oh, the way the federal grant, the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program actually works, it doesn't matter what kind of disaster, as long as it's in the state, the fed, the state has a pot of money to assign to a grant. And so we are using the, applying for flooding, even though it was tied to a federal grant for an earthquake. So, and that's where the nuances are, yes.
We're from the federal government, and we're here to help, right? Yeah. The only question I had, and some of it, I think, is answered by the pins. Are there any redundancies between the 11, the eight, and the nine on the three different grant applications that you've made? There's obviously some variation between the three maps.
Redundancies in the homeowner?
In the individual units or homes that we're seeking to do.
No, they're all separate, all of them. Everyone is a, it's an application, and each one has to fit certain requirements. So the 12, the SRL 12-1, only certain homes could be applied under that grant, and only certain ones can be under each of these hazard mitigation grants. And so we try to find and leverage what will work best to package to meet all the FEMA requirements on behalf of the city.
So what your department has managed to do is to identify 28 of our most challenged homes and to apply for federal funds that are there for someone to use. Is that a good summary?
Yes. But to give you an example, we've talked to close to 90 homeowners. We have lots of applications. Some actually meet requirements, some don't, but if we're able to bundle and move things around and try to package so that we have everything, get as many homes as we can in the grant application process for consideration, that's what we've been trying to do, as opposed to applying one by one.
I just, to me, this falls under the category of proactive, so it's very exciting to see this package, to be able to get a report like this and see where action is playing out. And I think you said the eight homes all look, the earthquake packages we refer to, are all looking good. Unfortunately, in the 11, the funds just didn't come through to be able to address all 11.
And what we're doing, and you know, with you all, with the home, you know, loan program and hazard mitigation, there's a commitment to mitigation in the city. And so we're doing our jobs to help bring in money that we can help homeowners, you know, we hear the stories, they flood all the time, you know, if there's a storm, and seeing what we can do, you know, and bring as much money as we can into the city. Because if we don't go after this, another jurisdiction is going to go after it.
Precisely.
And so, you know, if we don't, and we've built the relationship with the state and also have, when I was talking about putting the structure in place, in order for us to apply for this many in this short amount of time, we have pretty much gone on record and showed that we have a structure that we can manage this amount of money and elevate these homes when they come into the city. Otherwise, they wouldn't have allowed us to keep applying.
Ms. Stewart?
I am curious if this is actually 28 homes or some of the homes missed out in that first go-around where you had the, what, $500,000 for 11 homes and I think only two?
We'll probably be able to do two, and part of it is construction costs have increased over time, and it also depends on the home and what kind of engineering study needs to be done. And when those grants were actually submitted, there wasn't the huge engineering studies that we're trying to do ahead of time now.
Right, but I guess my second question would be, when you apply for these grants, do you have to list the particular, the house, specific house that's going to be elevated if you get the money, or you're saying, hey, we have a number of homes that we want to try and use this money for?
No, there is a actual whole application process that homeowners have to go through, and it's close to easily 60 pages or more. By the time we get all the backup documentation to put together, it is a lot of work, and it's a time-consuming thing, both on the homeowner's side and on ours. And then sometimes, once it gets to the state, the state goes, we need more information. And then we have to kind of almost bargain with the state and work out whether they're going to accept this home or not, and how they read it and how they run our numbers, too. So, and the homes that are not, you know, may not be in the elevation, for like example, that first four homes, we have them in the list to go into another project. So they're not completely off the project list. Okay.
You mentioned a pool of about 90 homes. If we had to classify as our truly chronic flooding homes, is 90 kind of that magic number, or where, what's a ballpark number for council to be able to?
We just had recently, and I'd have to go back and provide the information to the manager to provide to you, FEMA has changed some guidance, and they have reclassified repetitive loss and severe repetitive loss properties, and, you know, our numbers have increased. So 90 was really the number of homeowners who've expressed interest and come in and talked to us in the office, so, or we've gone to them. There is probably, actually, I think there's significantly more.
Okay. Can we seek to at least identify according to the current terms what that number is? So as we see over the years, the different grants that you apply for and the homes that are taken care of, we can kind of know we're working towards steadily getting those addressed, that can be.
And we've been working with Gail in floodplain management to kind of get an idea and working through that and being, trying to be as proactive as we can, absolutely.
Thank you.
Just to finish up a little bit, the application, we have additional initiatives, and again, being proactive as we are as a city, is, the state actually came to us in the DeRachow event. They actually had a very limited pool, however, they asked us to submit an application of additional five homes to kind of be waiting on the wings in case another project in the Commonwealth fell out, and so that we were already sitting there waiting so that we can actually slide right in, because you had to already be in the system. And so they asked us to, or they invited us to put in one, so we're in a holding pattern on that one. And I'm hoping, not that I hope some other project doesn't get done, but I'm hoping we can, you know, be part of that. And then we are currently working on a flood mitigation assistance program where we may be able to elevate up to 12 homes, we might not, but we're taking a look at that right now, and the turnaround with the new guidance is extremely tight. And it's a nationally competitive program on this one, so it's, although it's going through the state, it's going to be competed on nationally. So we're really taking it off that severe repetitive flood loss list, and we've got criteria in place. So we'll be bringing that forward to you all. And so I know there was a lot of grants, and I, you know, to borrow from the chief to an analogy, a visual, very visual, it's kind of like a runway. You know, we have DR 1862, SRL 12, DR 402, we always rush to get on a plane, and then you sit on the runway waiting to taxi off. And so, but you can't move on some of these grants until others have already taken off. And some are at the state level, some are at the federal level. And so as we move forward, we've got a lot lined up, and that's why, again, we're putting the structure in place in emergency management so that we can better manage these and come to a successful conclusion. And then the other is, I hope, is that with the steering committee, is to look at larger infrastructure projects. And when the opportunity is there, we've already identified projects that we can just pull off the shelf, do a little dusting, and help work, you know, and submit at least for consideration. And just to kind of, also to piggyback off the, it's not just grants, you guys really believe in mitigation in the city and the hazard mitigation loan program for our citizens. It's an opportunity, again, to, for those who may not qualify for mitigation grants, may not meet the requirements that are stringent, but they want to elevate their home, they know their home floods, it's an opportunity to apply. They may need a match fund requirement. Not all the grants are 100% funded, some are 90% funded, some are 75% funded, so there is a match requirement for the homeowners on this. So this grant, that loan program that you have created, allows for that. And then others may, again, may not want to wait. You know, sometimes, like you said, the, from the earthquake to now, we're still waiting on the award. It takes a little while till funds kind of flow. And then it may only be a small mitigation project, they want to move their duck, you know, duck work up, so it wouldn't qualify. And so we've promoted the program, we created a simple, you know, two-page fact sheet, we've done mailings, emails, phone calls, community presentations, there's a website link for the information, and we've met with several homeowners and kind of answered their questions and talked to them. No loans have actually been made out of this right now because of, in discussions with folks, sometimes their self-advised credit scores may not, or reasons that may not allow them, lend them to applying. The loan-to-value ratio was over 100% of the current appraised or assessed value of the home, and the project may not have qualified as a mitigation activity. And some homeowners actually were able to leverage other loan options to fit their situation better. So, so just in conclusion, I wanted to just summarize, we are in, close to about 7 million, you know, we're looking to bring that into the city. We've got 1.6, and we've got a few more in the hopper, so I open up to questions.
Ms. Stewart?
It's a wonderful thing when you can point to a department and say that its return on investment is several hundred percent, if not maybe 1,000% compared to what you've done with grants versus, you know, what the salaries and other expenses are to maintain the department, so kudos there. The question I had on, I believe, slide 18 is, if you can go back to that one, please?
Oh, yes.
With the HMLP. This program was designed with the best of intentions, and we've allocated funds. Some time has passed. Is it time for us to reevaluate how to use this most effectively? Do we start supplementing other grants and putting it on top of some federal and other state money? How do we see that this begins to start to actually positively affect citizens that have suffered? Because what we don't want to do, I think, is go another year and another year looking at a process that maybe simply doesn't fit. The Hugh Bassett comes here all the time and says, gosh, I can get this great loan if only my home was worth this, or if I could, you know, borrow that, or if I could, you know, the criteria, by the time you're done looking at the criteria, it simply doesn't fit and it doesn't allow for action to be taken. So what do we need to do to make these funds useful for Hampton citizens?
Well, I would, this, my recommendation would be, give it a little bit more time as we get these planes off the runway, for example, some of these grants that we're going to be working with the homeowners, we're right there. And so this may be an option where some of those homeowners may need to tap into these funds. And then the other is to really market it a little bit more, and we're doing our best to do that. I think that some folks may not know this is an option out there.
Okay. It sounds as if, and this is implied, you're developing on a daily basis a really comprehensive list of who these homeowners are, where these homes are located, and you can continue to go back to the well based on what grants are available, be they state or federal or city-related things.
We try to find the best fit for the homeowner that we can.
So we're a little wiser every day, is that a good way to put it? And I guess my next question is, have we in any way demolished any homes that fall in these categories that would be maybe considered for raising, but they've either been foreclosed and have low value, and, but they've just been flooded repetitively so many times that best thing to do is to just simply remove it from the group of available residences?
Funny you mention that. The federal grants do allow for acquisition of homes to be demolished, but again, they have to meet really stringent criteria, and that is part of the discussion as we're building the structure. Right now, we focused really on elevating, and these homeowners want to elevate their homes, but there may be folks that want to, you know, have their homes acquired and demolished.
So that's another tool in the toolbox?
It's another tool, it's an option, and that I was going to work with the manager on and take a look at that as we look at it holistically, because we want to make the best decisions we can.
But if I'm not mistaken, and the rules may have changed because they're constantly changing, if you use the federal...
changing, if you use the federal money to do that, you must leave the land vacant from that point four. Is that not correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So you couldn't come in and build a new home elevated. So that's why a lot of times you'll find that people prefer the elevation as opposed to tearing down with the federal money and then rebuilding because you're not permitted to rebuild.
It becomes a permanent, non-tax generating crease.
Yes. It's open space and you've got to maintain it.
And I don't know if Mr. Reyes is better able to speak to this, but the Hampton 101, are you prepared for flooding? Based on the criteria in this document that we received, it seems like an awful lot of what your department does was coupled with their...
Absolutely. Actually, we just participated. We partner with them every time they have one. And Gwen, who is our Mercy Management Planner, who's the mitigation specialist in the city, actually gave a presentation at the recent Hampton 101, which I attended with Mr. Reyes. So we absolutely are very hand-in-hand with them.
Well, thank you again. Sometimes I'm at a kind of loss for words, but it's thrilling to see this level of action and this level of proactivity in regards to some of these challenges that we face as a waterfront community. So thank you.
Ms. Teck?
Yes, this is an awkward question. Your average seems to be about $250,000 maybe per home. And, and I don't know the values of some of the homes in the areas where they get repetitive flooding or whatever. But I would throw out this question to you. If you've got a $350,000 home and the average price to elevate that home is about 250 and the couple is about 70 years old, what are you going to tell those people?
Well, actually, all of those criteria that you brought up, FEMA has a federal, it's called a benefit cost analysis. So there's no criteria. The home has to meet, it doesn't matter if it's 350 versus 400,000. It has to meet all these factors that we plug into this formula. And we have to get a lot of historical data and the amount of damage and things like that to even make a recommendation to that homeowner. And I know you said the average is 250. Some homes actually may only cost 150,000 to elevate. It may be the other home that's like 300-some thousand. And so we take a look at all that. But again, FEMA has this benefit cost analysis that if we don't even meet the one ratio, we can't even submit it. Does that help answer your question?
Anybody else? All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Walker. We appreciate your time. Thank you. All right. That brings us to item three, which is an update regarding proposed chicken keeping, update regarding the proposed chicken keeping ordinance from Mrs.
And I'm going to turn it over to Cynthia. She's prepared a substitute, I guess you'd call it, ordinance based upon some of the feedback that we got from various council members and questions that we had. And then we also have Captain Candy here to answer any questions you have about how animal control will enforce the regulations. Because I know there's been questions about if people don't keep up with their properties or what have you, how will we manage all that? But I think it's probably best, given that you have a new ordinance in front of you, that we lead off with Cynthia and then we'll go to Captain Candy's presentation.
Just briefly, not to just repeat verbatim what I've already put in the background statement on this. If you'll recall, in our last meeting, our last afternoon work session in which Captain Candy and Lisa Yates of my office introduced to you the proposed zoning, excuse me, city code ordinance provisions that would more liberally allow chicken keeping than our present code does, we were seeking your input with respect to various options that we had in connection with exactly how this ordinance would work, with respect to the number of chickens, for instance, the nature of the violation and the level of fine to be imposed for violation, whether to impose a permit, an inspection requirement, those kinds of things. And with the input that we received from you, we submitted an ordinance for your review and consideration that's in your, that's on your agenda tonight. But even since then, we have received feedback from you all individually and from citizens that have led us to further amend the proposed ordinance that we sent to you in your agenda packages on Friday. And one of the main things we wanted to do today was to not only specify for you exactly the decisions that we had made regarding your input last time, but obviously the ones, too, that we've made based on the input we've received just since Friday, for instance, when the agenda package went out to you. So Captain Candy is here to present the proposed ordinance in the form that we will ask you to consider it tonight, which includes the most recent changes since your agenda went out. And they relate to, for instance, what seemed to be a very significant and widespread concern about whether or not people who are presently able to keep chickens on basically large lots is what it's, what it amounts to. Because we determined, at least historically had determined, there was sufficient distance between properties for chicken keeping on large lots not to constitute at least the perceived nuisances that some neighbors perhaps thought they, they might pose. But there was concern that perhaps we just leave those folks alone and they're, allow them to currently keep chickens on the same basis as we historically had. You may, I'm sure you know from looking at your agenda package, that the ordinance proposal we sent out on Friday would have imposed a grandfather permit requirement on those large lot owners by which, under which by a certain date, October 1, they would have had to seek a permit that would grandfather them in their present ability to keep chickens they already have. There were some thinking that that was perhaps too restrictive and that we simply allow the present rules to apply with respect to the large lot owners. And that's what we've done in the most recent iteration of this ordinance. There was also a number of concerns expressed regarding whether or not we had standards in place that we would put into the ordinance with respect to how we would determine cleanliness and sanitation standards and space requirements. And what we thought we would do, just to allay any concerns people have about those issues, would make clear in the ordinance that the city manager is empowered, in fact, has the responsibility to put in place policies and guidelines for implementing the ordinance that address what our standards will be for enforcement in those areas. So that's kind of a catch-all phrase. We also had a very specific inquiry about whether or not you could kill the chickens to eat them after, after they were no longer, or for whatever reason. But we thought we would address that very specifically in the ordinance. And we've taken the position that slaughtering chickens for consumption or for any reason would not be permitted in the city of Hampton. But obviously, it's up to you whether or not you agree with that proposal. With that, I give to you Captain Candy, the brave soul that she is.
We are back with the backyard chicken keeping issues. I'm going to go briefly through the slides one more time just to refresh everybody so that we can go through the changes.
And I'm sorry, Susan, let me just say, too, and I'm sure you've noticed already, I passed out to each of you a hard copy of the proposed ordinance with its most recent changes. And those most recent changes are highlighted in yellow so that you see the differences from the one you got in your agenda package.
Under the current Hampton City Code and this, under the new revision, would be left in, people who were able, or citizens who are able to keep the chickens 175 feet or more from residential buildings or 250 feet from schools or churches would be allowed to maintain their chickens with an unlimited number. This mimics what we have right now. In addition to that, for the more urban chicken keeping or the more urban areas where you have houses closer together, anybody who wanted to keep a chicken that could be, could get them within 25 feet of the next residential structure could ask for a permit, which, of which there's a $25 fee, to keep those chickens. And that would allow them to keep up to four chickens. The Hampton Animal Control would go out. They would inspect the area to make sure that the chickens were being kept in the proper distance from the other residential structures, that the facility was going to be appropriate for the number of chickens the person wanted to keep. And this is mainly to, A, prevent the person from going out, spending all the money for the chicken coop, the area to keep the chickens and building everything and then going, oh, you can't do that. Because that's going to be a very expensive endeavor if they do. This way, Animal Control can go out, they can look at where the structure is going to be, the type of structure, the area they're going to allow for the chickens and say, you're great, or you need to make this adjustment, maybe you need to move it back this 10 feet to make it within the allowable distance, and assure that everything's in compliance. So in addition to helping Animal Control know that we're going to have everything in a humane area and a humane way, it's going to help the citizen by not having them build something and get something they're not going to be able to keep. And we're going to have to come back out and tell them to take down.
Ms. Stewart?
As it reads now, this is a one-time fee. Is that correct?
That is correct. People aren't typically going to be moving coops around, so there's really no reason to go back a second time.
So they file for it, your department visits, make sure it's, doesn't turn out to be a town home or something of that sort, and then everything's done?
And then we're done unless somebody complains. It also helps with that, though, because if we go out and we make sure that everything's where it's supposed to be and we know they only have four hens, and then the neighbor calls in and says, they've got chickens in their backyard. We're able to say, yes, we're clear, we've inspected the site and they're in compliance. That will assist that person from being constantly bothered by Animal Control going out just because somebody says there's chickens in the backyard.
I'd rather live without it, but figuring out it's a one-time fee and that there's actually a service they're receiving from the city in the meantime to make sure, as you said, pre-investment.
Absolutely.
It kind of all, all works, makes it much easier to consider. So thank you.
Yeah. I'm, fencing right now is very expensive, any metal is. Just a small garden fence right now will run you somewhere between 100 and 200 dollars. If you're going to build a chicken coop, it's going to be more than that.
Real quickly, I really appreciate your explanation about this because I had a question about this. I'm concerned that we're adding a step that maybe doesn't entirely make sense and I'm willing to be talked out of it. If they come in and get an application, I mean, people do this for dangerous dogs, they do this for feral cat colonies, they do it for all these things. And Animal Control can't possibly go out and inspect all these people's homes and their yards and whatever they have before they issue the permit.
We actually do.
Okay. The statute doesn't require it?
For feral cat colonies, those cat colonies are inspected on a regular basis.
Right.
So even though they only pay for their cat, they only do their cat colony registration for free, we still go out and do those. And for dangerous dogs, we go out and inspect constantly to make sure they're in compliance.
But I don't see it in the statute where it's required. So I guess what I'm suggesting is if they come in and pay the fee for the $25, then you know where they are and that they've applied for a permit, right? Until they build the chicken coop and acquire the four hens, how do you really inspect them for compliance? I mean, when you're going out to look at the feral cat colony or the, or the dangerous dog, they exist.
One of the...
To me, it makes more sense to inspect after they have the chickens in the coop.
Well, one of the parts to that application is actually a drawing that gives us an idea of where they're coming from. We'll know the location of the address and that will help. But yes, we will have to go back. And if they're not meeting compliance, we'll go back for free.
And one thing that might help you with this is there's essentially a zoning component to this in that there are certain setback areas that need to be maintained pursuant to zoning laws. And in addition, you have to be 25 feet from other structures. So it's felt that it's an assistance to the citizen prior to constructing something that could be costly, to make sure that the setback, that the area that they intend to build in is proper before they build. And that's the reasoning.
Mayor?
Well, just, if I come in to get a building permit, to build a garage or whatever, I have to come in and get a permit and show that I have all the right setbacks, et cetera. And if I have a problem, then I have to go get a variance rider, right? So, but people don't come out and measure my yard, right? They, they, we, they look at the survey and we show where the setbacks are in the survey and we get the permit that way.
Correct. And I guess, I guess, and of course, council in their discretion can decide that this is not something that they want.
I'm just trying to understand. I'm not...
But, but we have the additional component of, of the animal control, animal welfare issues, I think, that make this different, to make sure that there is enough space. We have concerns about neighbors, you know, not making sure that we're, we're not interfering with their space. So I think it is a little bit different, but I can certainly understand the question about why this is different than just a building permit. You know, it's not, it's not just a structure and it's not just an animal license like, you know, feral cat colony or something is.
And Mayor, to your point about inspecting at that point before things are built, the ordinance, anyway, also contemplates that Animal Control will go out, is empowered to and will go out and do periodic inspections. Those periodic inspections would include, okay, did they build that coop? Did they build it in compliance? And periodically, are they continued to be in compliance? So there is that capability there.
Which is all I think you need.
Right. And as opposed to the prior inspection. I see.
I spent too much time on that.
No, we didn't. I disagree with that. I would much rather have an inspection, pay an inspection and pay $25 rather than pay 200, $300 to get my coop constructed. And you come by and tell me it's in violation, you can't possibly qualify because you can't meet the 25, 25-foot boundaries.
Oh, I'm not arguing. I'm just saying that I'm done asking questions. That's all I meant.
Animals bring out those heartstrings. We understand. Again, we're going to go back to, in the more urban areas, only four chickens. They have to be hens, no roosters because of the noise and the complaint from the noise. And...
Excuse me, where's the gender equity in this process? I just, I'm sorry.
It's okay. It's all right. I now walk into the store and they go, oh, you're the chicken lady. So, again, we've, we've made it specific, no slaughter of chickens for consumption or otherwise shall occur on the property. To address the welfare of the chickens, they have to be in a clean and safe structure and the Animal Control officers are authorized to go in and do periodic inspections to make sure it stays that way. We obviously don't want a buildup of, of animal feces or feathers or food on the ground that's going to make a situation where we're going to have an odor that's going to disturb the neighborhood. And no commercial activity such as selling of the eggs or the chicken meat or the fertilizer will be allowed. If after an investigation, we find out that they have not complied and we've had to respond out two or more times, that they've been convicted of these violations, we will have the right to revoke the permit and they can't have the chickens anymore. We have asked for a fine of $250. Somebody asked me, why is it $250? It's a deterrent. You know, I understand that that seems kind of steep, but we've found with the tethering law and other laws that a small fine is not deterring. And that's typically what we get from the courts, is a 25 or $50 fine and it doesn't deter somebody. We did have questions about, well, if you come out and I have five chickens instead of four, am I going to get a $250 fine? Well, yes, if we write you the summons, but typically an Animal Control officer will give you a violation notice and tell you, you need to correct it within X days before we give you the violation, unless it's an ongoing situation.
Ms. Stewart?
I've managed to avoid ever being fined for chicken ownership. So in terms of reading item number two, is that written in a way that a judge would have discretion or does a judge have discretion anyway?
With respect to the...
With respect to the amount?
We were taking discretion away.
We took discretion away so that they could not do a $25 or $50 fine.
It seems more appropriate to provide discretion to our judicial counterparts, I would think. I don't know what the consensus of the rest of council is.
I disagree with that conclusion.
Well, and as Captain Candy said, we found that when, if you don't specify a mandatory minimum, basically, or a set fine, that with the range, and especially with the range being like from $25 to 250, you reach a point where it's cheaper to pay the fine than to comply, especially since you're only doing periodic inspections. So we were trying to address that issue.
My concern is that it's just out of whack. I understand that maybe the other statutes have discretion and the judges aren't giving you the fines that you think would be a deterrent. But to me, it doesn't make sense to have one, you know, it's okay, like dangerous dogs is, you can have 45 days to register your dog after a judge... your dog after a judge finds you have a dangerous dog. I'm, I'm much more worried about a dangerous dog than a chicken. And the, the, it seems to me, if we're going to take away discretion here, we ought to look at the other statutes and decide whether we should take discretion. I think you're penalizing the chicken owners because of problems you're having with people who are tethering.
I think there's some misconception about the dangerous dog. The dangerous dog finding is a civil proceeding that then specifies that dog is a dangerous dog. The 150 is a registration fee, not a fine. They're also having to get $100,000 worth of insurance, they have to build a privacy fence, they have to muzzle their dog, they have to meet a number of descriptions. It all adds up to about $1,000. That doesn't account for the fine they receive for whatever the violation was that got the dog to dangerous, which is typically, they bit someone, and that is a much more, a much steeper fine. So it's not out of proportion when you, when you look at it as a whole.
I wasn't talking about the fine, I was talking about the 45 days to register. I just, so, I, my point just is, is that the fact that in other cases, the fact we gave judges discretion means they have lower fines, maybe then we should look, if that's the, if that's a problem, we should address it universally and not just take the discretion away when it comes to chickens, is what I'm trying to say.
And that's what I would suggest, quite frankly, is that we fix the other ones.
Yes, ma'am. I, I don't, I don't disagree. Like Ms. Hudson, I would like to see us put mandatory fines on everything. As an animal control officer, we see a lot of people get, just withhold findings, get warnings, get a $25 fine, and we're right back out there. And it becomes a really bad cycle that we get nowhere with. So yes, I would love to see a mandatory fine on every animal control ordinance.
All right, go, I'm sorry, anybody else?
Then should we not direct the manager and the city attorney to, to address that issue and bring it back to us for consideration in a relatively short period of time?
You mean with respect to making this more uniform?
Making the adjustments to the other situations that causes the, the animal enforcement people problems, as it relates to what we're trying to do to preclude them from having a problems with the chicken ordinance.
Certainly glad to, to do that, or to adjust this fine downward until we do that.
Mr. Time?
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm trying to determine, I guess, what the vice mayor's asking, is that we're going to defer acting on this because we want to make it, okay, then what were, what's my, what's the correct interpretation?
I guess you can, the, the vice mayor can tell us exactly what he means, but I'll take it--
What I'm speaking for, we address this particular situation on the basis of this particular document that's in front of us, and approval or disapproval on the basis of what is here, recognizing by virtue of doing this, it has brought to our attention something else that we need to address that's corollary to this, and that we are directed the, the staff to bring the corollary issues back to us for consideration subsequently. And at that particular time, in our judgment and deliberations, in terms of what we have to do, we'll consider the fact that on this particular situation, we've already taken a course of action that they will probably be asking us to take subsequently on the additional issues that they'll bring to, forward to us.
And we're certainly committed to bringing you our proposals for making these fines more uniform or, or fairer, so that some are not discretionary and others are mandatory minimums, to, to bring the same thinking to the other situations as the mayor suggested.
Actually, I wasn't suggesting that, I was just pointing out the inconsistency.
Regarding the inconsistency--
I actually am a fan, I'm a fan of judicial discretion, okay, just for the record, thank you.
One way to give our judges judicial discretion possibly that might be more palatable is to say a, a minimum fine of $25 to a maximum of $250. You can specify a range, they can't go below that. You still may have the problem that Captain Canny was talking about, where they always give $25 fines. Now, if your coop costs $300, then you're going to have to get a significant number of fines before it's worth your while to have to build the coop and get the permit. So that's another way of dealing with it, though.
I, I don't, I don't want to do a local government one on one particular process here, but we're the legislative body, and we make the rules and, and the legislation, and the judge enforces the rule on the basis of the legislation that's before them.
But, Madam Mayor, but in those cases, the reason for judicial discretion is the judge is sitting there with the details. And right now, severe violators are thrown in the same bucket with unintentional or easily fixed things that happen to result in a, what do you call it, not a warrant, but in a violation--
A summons.
Sure. So I certainly find it more palatable to have a minimum of, say, $100, which does have some oomph to it, and there aren't many people that don't flinch if they have to take a $100 bill out of their wallet, and a maximum of 250. To me, that creates strumper, structure temporarily to allow this particular issue to be moved forward and voted on hopefully as soon as possible, so the citizens that are interested in this can consider it. And then when we do an overall visitation of fines related to animal keeping in the city, we can revisit this and make sure it's part of a uniform thing, so I'd offer that up for everyone's consideration.
My response to that is, the presumption is that the, the judge is the only individual or, opportunity for discretion to be displayed in, in this particular situation. If the, the course of action, as you described it, takes place, then there's discretion on part of the, the officer, the, the animal enforcement officer, in terms of whether to brain charge this or not brain charge this and issue a warning when that particular part. So we don't preclude discretion being utilized by virtue of the fact that we allow the discretion not to take place at the judicial area, but in terms of the law enforcement area.
And I hate to point out that they still do have, judges still would have one other point of discretion with this mandatory amount. It would be not to find them guilty, but to find the evidence sufficient and withhold the finding conditioned upon the person getting rid of the fifth chicken, sixth chicken, building the coop in a certain period of time. They routinely do that. And what judges don't see oftentimes is the discretion that went before getting to court, the discretion that the animal control officer used in giving warnings, et cetera. So there, so there are a number of things in play here, and we're certainly willing to take our direction from council as, as to what we do with a fine.
Well, and if, I'm sorry, Mayor, Mayor? And if you'll note, too, as I mentioned, we, maybe I didn't mention it, one of the requests that we had about amending this from its original form was that we require that staff bring back to council for its consideration a year after implementation, this new provision, so you can kind of see how the test drive went, so to speak. And that would include, obviously, the enforcement mechanism or the penalty provision, wherever you decide to set it. And we probably need to expand on that, we were a little, the language presently says, council shall review this section one year after its implementation. And we were trying to do this in the last 24 hours, and it was for effectiveness or for continued, we weren't exactly sure what direction you wanted to take. We didn't want it to have a sunset, because that would perhaps then deter people from doing it now, or have some effects on, on, on people's reception of this that we didn't want to, to mess around with. But if you want to give us any further direction on that language, we're happy to consider that as well.
Well, the good news, I think, Madam Mayor, is by the time our citizens that are interested in kangaroo ownership come before us, we'll, we'll really be used to kind of talking about these things to the nth degree. But are, are we set to vote on this this evening, or is this kind of milled out tonight? So, so we'll have the ability to modify any motion based on kind of what our consensus is.
All right. Have you had conversation with our chicken keeping citizens about this ordinance, so have they weighed in on this, and?
We have had conversation with them, we've had emails from them, and we've addressed the concerns in their emails.
And in your opinion, they're okay with the ordinance like this?
Most people that I've talked to have been very excited about being able to keep the chickens in smaller areas. And we've only had one person that voiced concern about the $250 fine. And the statement was, so if I have a fifth chicken, I get a $250 fine. And I think that's extreme. It may be the police officer in me, but that kind of said, well, if you'll make it 50, I'll have the fifth chicken. So, you know, I, I don't know if that was the intent of the statement, I only know that, that, you know, we are having issues with, with not getting compliance with some of the animal control issues because of this. And this is going to be a big issue if you get a chicken coop behind a townhome.
Anybody else? Enough? Okay. All right, thank you so much, and thank you for your patience with us. All right, that brings us to the closed session agenda, unless somebody has new business or regional issues.
I did have two regional issues, Madam Mayor, I'll, I'll keep them brief. The first is, it just so happens coincidentally that I'm the chairman of the board of the Peninsula Fine Arts Center, which, considering I can't whistle, carry a tune, or doodle, that's, I find that very ironic. But the Peninsula Fine Arts Center and its membership came together and, and voted to, on an initiative or a memorandum of understanding for combining with Christopher Newport University's Fine Arts Department. So we're, we're kind of thrilled that that took place. We look forward to a, a brand-new, tens of millions of dollars building being built on the Christopher Newport University campus, and so that's an exciting endeavor for the Peninsula Fine Arts Center. Additionally, was appointed by Governor McDonald, served in the Chesapeake Bay Bridge Tunnel Commission, and I'm happy to report, although there aren't necessarily a, an inordinate amount of Hamptonians that travel through that routinely, that an initiative to build a parallel tunnel and establish the toll structure for that was voted on, and that initiative is now moving forward. So those efforts will begin in terms of procurement such. And additionally, my next efforts on those boards are going to be proposing research combining the CBBT staff and the city of Hampton staff towards a bridge offshoot of the Chesapeake Bay Bridge Tunnel that hopefully will take travelers through Hampton, so it would be a prospective Hampton connection of the Chesapeake Bay Bridge Tunnel. So I'm going to be asked that that be studied and evaluated and see what its potential future may be. So it won't be as large as, or I guess it'll be a little larger than the bridge to Buckrow envisioned by Vice Mayor Wallace, but nonetheless, it's, it's an exciting thing, I think, for the future of transportation in the area, as well as Hampton in particular, so, thank you.
I just, I just hope you have more, more success in getting that to come here than I am with that bridge from Buckrow, okay?
All right, thank you. All right, we need to go into closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2, 3711, Point A, Point 1, Point 3, Point 7, and Point 29, to consider various boards and commissions appointments, to discuss acquisition of property for public purpose in the North Hampton area of the city where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the city's bargaining position or negotiating strategy, and to consult with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters pertaining to council authority and decision-making regarding land use regulation, regarding the comprehensive plan, regarding state procurement law applicable, application to city sponsorships, and to discuss the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including interviews of bidders or offers, and discussion of the terms and scope of such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the city. I'll get you to read it next time.
Mayor needs a motion.
So move.
Second.
Councilman Hoffs.
Aye.
Councilman Moffett.
Aye.
Councilwoman Snead.
Aye.
Councilman Stewart.
Aye.
Councilman Tuck.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wallace.
Aye.
Mayor Ward.
Aye. All right, it's 2:45, let's meet, you can't rely on the clock on the wall, by the way. I don't know, that must be some other country. We will meet at 3 o'clock in the Lawson Conference Room.